Kim, please join me with the pledge of allegiance. Okay, good evening, everyone. All spread out through the room. This is the February eleventh meeting of the Town of Canada Planning Board, welcome. Let me introduce the folks sitting up front, Kareen Hatch is our recording secretary. Tim Burford is our remote facilities coordinator, board members tonight are Tim Schneider. Who is his latest native alternate member, but soon to be a full-time member. So next meeting you'll be, we making the big books. Mark Tolbert is a board member, Amanda Van Der Ligt is a board member, I'm Chuck Euler, chairman of the board. We've got Sarah Reynolds, who is the town planner. You've had so many titles. Harry Cooper from representing MRB and Chris Nadler, who is our attorney. We're gonna follow the agendas published. And if you become to a part of the agenda that you would like to speak. We'd like to have you use a podium, come up, give us your name and address. And address your comments to the board. And we will then go through a, for each application, a review by the applicant of each application. We'll then have a more deliberation on the application. Then we'll have the public comment, any questions, concerns the public may have here or online. And then we'll reconvene as a board and deliberate on the, on the application and possibly take it, hopefully take action. Uh, what else do I want to say regarding a protocol? That's about it. So the first item really on the agenda is the privilege of floor. Uh, that's for anybody that's here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda. Oh, that's right, forgot to introduce Robert, our vice chairman. Sorry, Bob.
Thanks.
You're here in spirit and remotely, thank you. Stayin' warm in Phoenix, right? Good for you. Okay, so privilege of the floor. Anyone here like to address the board regarding an issue not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to the agenda. We have one public hearing tonight. And a continuation of a couple others, but the new public hearing is CPN. Twenty-four, one-twenty-eight, a subdivision on Thomas Road, fifty-eight, sixty, Thomas Road. That has been duly advertised in the Daily Messenger on February the sixth. So that has been taken care of in terms of the legality of the public notice. Now we will move on to the agenda, and the first item on the agenda is twenty-twenty-four, one-seventeen. It's a continuation of a public hearing regarding a special use permit and site plan. For twenty-sixty-one County Route Eight, submitted by Nixon Peabody. Specifically Jared Lusk regarding a Verizon cell tower out on County Route Eight. We did receive from the applicant additional information. What a volume of additional information that was received last week. Due to the amount of information involved, it was sort of agreed between us and the applicant that we would continue the hearing. They give us time to review the application as well as give other interested parties, including the neighbors. And their council time to review the response. Uh, the, I should say that the application or the submission includes a alternative location. For the tower, it's still on the same property, but it's been, it's been moved further to the south. So it's a little further away from the homes that were of major concern, I guess, at the last meeting. Uh, but it's still on the property, it's still, still, uh, still, uh. In, in, in the works as far as being applied for. So again, we will extend that hearing, continue the hearing to a later date, and I am suggesting. We continue to our March eleventh meeting. Is that something, Mr. Nadler, that you think would work for the applicant? It would give the board and the neighbors enough time to review the submission?
Yes, earlier today, I received a letter from Nixon Peabody stating that. The town accordingly provides and hereby consents to adjourn the application. From the February eleventh Planning Board Agenda to the February twenty-fifth Planning Board Agenda, they're requesting replacement on the February twenty-fifth. They have, uh, however, while reserving all rights under the FCC shot clock order and applicable law. Verizon hereby agrees to extend the shot clock to the eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, the board that. A letter from Nixon Peabody to the town planner for upload onto cloud permit. But I think if we could put them back on the twenty-fifth. That would give us a meeting to review, and then another meeting after that before that we have to discuss extending the shot clock. Which would inspire right after. Well, either way.
Yeah, I, I looked at it, based on our existing agenda for the twenty-fifth, it's rather full. And try to take this on that, that meeting and see if we do have the time before the expiration of the clock. If we could extend that to the eleventh to March.
Obviously.
I think that would be, does that sound okay to the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I need a motion to continue the hearing for both the site plan and the special use permit. Until March eleventh.
I'll make that motion for CPN twenty-four dash one-one-seven. Uh, it will be destined to March eleventh, continuation of March eleven.
Okay, and I should state as been our policy, any supplemental information that's gonna be submitted that. Either the applicant or the neighbors are likely to have us consider be submitted before, on or before March fourth. So we have time to digest that as well as the information we see, received last week.
Also, for the record, if I may, I get forward to the neighbor's attorney. All materials submitted by Nixon Peabody recently, it's six hundred some odd pages. And the board is also in receipt of a proposed resolution from the neighbor's attorney.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. To extend the hearing to the eleventh to March, all in favor? Post, so we'll talk about that once more. Okay, next on the agenda is twenty-twenty-four, one-twenty-five. Uh, an application by Richard Days for property at twenty-four ninety-five Brickyard Road. Midnight, April. Someone here representing Mr. Days?
Maybe Mr. Days. I'm here, waiting for the crowds.
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, uh, tell us a little bit about the project. I guess what you, what you have approvals for previously? What you intend to do now, and then we'll go from there.
Sure, my name's Richard Dice for twenty-four ninety-five Brickyard Road. I am the owner of the property and the businesses that are there. I don't know the exact dates, but we had zoning board approval for some changes. We had some different driveways. Signage up front. Uh, I think it's in the last engineer drawings that were given. That the board is aware of. Those items have been happening, we're finishing up items. Uh, we had to put abrupt stop on things, unfortunately, our G and E's transformer was exploded and decided to throw oil all over our property. That was a nice time, um, so they're currently working with us to.
When did that happen?
Uh, a week before Christmas.
Okay.
So now we've stopped all processes of things in there right now. Uh, they are, they're helping, we're just work with that, and they're removing all the topsoil off the front part of the entire building, like everything. Um, so that is in the cleanup phase. We do have permission and approvals for the lot line change. The property line headed towards the pond, which would be the south side, was approved.
So you're acquiring property.
We're acquiring from the town, just fifty feet, but we're moving the property line over. Um, that's all done and approved, uh, we actually got the paperwork just, I think, three days ago. That's finally completed, uh, so that is happening. Our intentions with this was, is to, we need to add a bump out of the, the commercial building that we have. Uh, we just don't have enough space, there's too much stuff outside, things have to come inside, there's not enough interior room. The original. Engineer drawings to do that bump out almost exceeded the cost of the building itself. So we asked for the board to look at this. For what information we could give them for this bump out, because we know that in the near future, we have to spend a lot of engineering. Uh, finances to rewrite the whole thing, to put it all back together, we knew topographical and everything else that it's gonna tie in. Such as this, the sewer, we're going to tie into the sewer, we had to wait for the neighbor to get done with his tie-in and things like that, so. This is an immediate need, this is an immediate. Expansion that we need, uh, we've been trying since beginning of twenty-four. Uh, and it just became too expensive with engineering for this small bump out, so. I know that the ground, we have talked with, with Ms. Reynolds, I've talked to Mr. Murphy. Uh, they felt that this was a possible approach to be able to get through this quickly, to get it done. And then we'll go back and pay the big money to all our engineers to completely rewrite everything else that we want to do and complete. So this is the point we're at right now.
So you, you had a plan, I believe that was dated back in twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah.
That was approved by this board, I.
Yes.
I think someone should remember that plan, uh, it involves certain improvements, uh, improving the parking, the front landscaping, all that.
Yep.
Did any or none of that?
Uh, about eighty-five percent is completed, yes, we dug out the driveways, we put, uh, working with. The town, Mr. Fletcher helped us figure out where mitigation of water needed to be, we put in some piping, we put in. Cut out the topsoil, we put in hard base, we basically changed the parking all around as we had on this drawing right here. Um, that is basically done, everything on the north side, we removed trees, all the above.
So what's the fifteen percent that's not?
Uh, I've had to walk up to here. We have not completed the sign. That's area right here, we had the topsoil pulled from here, all ready to go, build the sign. And this section right here, we have not changed any of this, which is needed. But all of this was cut out, done, pad was poured through that, everything else is completed.
Okay, and I believe as part of your agreement with the town, you're gonna replace some shrubbery along the.
So the, the property line, yes, the property line here. Has been moved out fifty feet. We now own or will be owning this section here, and in doing so, working with the town. We're going to build a small burn, the pond, there's a pond here, holy pond. If we're gonna build a small burn, remove all the dilapidated trees that are here, lumber, elm, and everything under it, it's horrible. We're gonna remove all of that, and on the burn, we're going to buy new trees and put them on the burn, so when you're coming down. Brickyard Road, you don't see a bunch of dilapidated trees and nasty old sandman's, because we've got stuff all over the place. So along with the expansion, we'll be able to organize our stuff a little cleaner. And have a pad drill that's moved over, more cosmetically pleasing on.
While you're there, Richard, uh, just for everybody's benefit, you wanna show where the bump out is?
The bump out would be here.
Okay. Sixty by. Sixty by hundred, right?
Yeah, six, sixty feet out, to the south, and one hundred, uh, from the corner of this part.
Okay, just, can we go in the board, understand, it's a little confusing that, how the plan was approved? I think you had, you're under a soil erosion control surety right now, right? It's still open?
Yeah, because of the front, we, because we removed, this was all this grass. This here, I actually said, this is a driveway here, this is the rest here, we removed all of this. And put in subbase, and now the driveway, people detract both here. That is complete, other than putting asphalt down on the subbase, but we've been held off to finish other projects. So the, it's the proposed expansion, let us just put this piece here. But the reason we're holding up with the engineering is just, it's just too expensive, we spent two hundred thousand dollars in engineering, by the time we get done, we would all of this. So we want to be able to have permission to put this in, it's impermeable grounds, already asphalt, it's already concrete, everything here, like that's a concrete pad. So no water, nothing changes, but when we go to move this burn. And move and bring it way out here, that's where all the engineers, they have to look at the entire property, rewrite everything. Put everything back down to black and white, and exactly where everything is now, plus where it is to be later. So that's where, you'll see us again a year from now, this is all completed. Mostly because of this, but this is topographically completely changed. Because this was uphill, it was back down.
What changes between now and then, and aside from the cost of doing it?
Time, business-wise, uh, we've been begging to do this for a while, engineers have. Put us in the wrong direction, so we're hustling to try the best we can to get this building up. Uh, we've got massive local jobs from RIT infrastructures going up to Googles and Orbel and everybody else that rely on us. We just don't have enough space here at the job site, at our place, we're, we're, we're running buildings everywhere, I've got them all the way over to Egypt. And just holding each New York, holding, holding equipment and pieces and parts, and we just don't have enough. Manpower, as everybody knows, it, it, it's, it's hard to get people, and we've got a good crew, and we spread them out, we just don't have. Tools, so by having this expansion here, we can utilize keeping our central base here in Ontario County. And stop using all these little satellite places to wholesome work, we can finish up the jobs we have and continue on. The engineering wanted forty-two thousand dollars for me to add a fifty thousand dollar addition. I, I can't spend ninety percent of costs for engineering for a simple bump out. Because knowing later, we're going to spend that and more. Because they're gonna have to look at the whole thing, rewrite it all, give it back to the board and say, okay. We're putting the burn in, we're doing this, we're doing that, here's the building, here's all this, but just, it's a cost thing and time thing.
Okay, so we have an approved plan back in twenty-two. You'd like to amend that plan to amend, amend the physical site for the bump out?
Yes.
And then come back in the future with another plan?
We'll come back in the future with, because of the property line change in that burn, because that is a lot of topographical.
And you're asking for a waiver on.
This.
Their plan to do the amendment to do the revision. How do we do it? How do you amend the plan?
We're asking for the amendment of this.
Yeah, yeah, and typically, if you have an amended plan, you bring in a new plan showing the bump out and anything else that's being done in relation to that.
Amendment site plan is really a, we, it's a convention employed by the town. For, for this purpose, it's appropriate, and I think hopefully they can retroactively check them. Go back and say it's an amendment site plan application, if that's what the board's interested in, but. There's requirements for an amended site plan approval, just like there are for site plan approval. Um, and those involve the board being able to. Tell what's going, so whether it's a new site plan or an amended site. The board has to be comfortable that it can make the, you know, findings that it's required to about the site.
But we would still have to approve a unprofessionally planned.
If you're comfortable doing, if, you know, if.
It's just other, every time we've done this before, there, there's at least a sketch or something.
Yeah, I mean.
That we, we, we've given some.
He had like a rendering.
So I guess my, my sense is either the board can become comfortable with this or not. And this would be a good opportunity if, if there's something the board would like to see. For example, I don't know this, but maybe the building added to the existing site plan, the proposed building added to the existing site plan. Might make this more clear. I don't know what that does to drainage, adding six thousand square foot of roof.
So it's all exactly the same.
Uh, but we need something to, we need to give the applicant feedback, that they have to come back with a plan that the board can consider.
And I, I don't think he has the ability to take a pen and take.
I can't change marks.
You can't watch, change marks.
Uh, we, we asked Mark to do the engineering change for us and, and. What was said and done are two different things, and by the time we got down to the deadline, he said, I got six weeks before I can look at it. So that's a problem. So we tried to hire another engineer, they can't use his drawings, they have to start all over. And now we go into deep, deep pockets to simply do a small bump.
I think we understand the question. What would be your timeline as far as if you got approval tonight, how soon you would wanna go ahead and start constructing this bump out?
Almost immediately. It, it is a very simple I-beam construction, working with. Mr. Murphy obviously would be there, knowing what we're doing, but it's, it's, it's exactly the same way our building is built now. We just keep moving it out, same exact styles of construction. It's not affecting water flow, it's, it's not affecting any environmental.
No, I, I don't think that's the issue, I think it's just a matter of, but, how do we? Have some sort of legacy as to, the reason we had a site plan approval in the first place was it's in the industrial zone. And that requires site plan.
Over a thousand square feet.
I mean, I can ask for a thousand square foot addition, six times.
No. We're trying to make it slick.
I mean, that's, this is basically where we're at right now, we tried to work with the engineers to get to this point, but, you know. Everything on that original site plan that you approved, that were technically drawn. Everything's approved, and we're moving down that road to completing it, eighty, eighty-five percent done. The only thing we're asking is, hey, this came up, can we add this addition to this site plan? And it's not major, square footage, you might think so, but overall, it's not for what we have. It's moving a wall out and, and, and moving it out, essentially what we're doing. We will be back again. Once all the other little stuff is done, because we have major construction going on to move that pad drill out, that is a.
When will you be back?
Well, I have to work with Mr. Fletcher and removing all those trees. And then we have to get our topographical figuring out what works for the land flow and everything else. I have to write all that information down, we have to hire the engineer, and then they will go from one corner of the building to the other. And put everything all back together, so I would think that it would be August, September. By the time we get an engineer to get the paperwork together saying, hey, this will be, this, that has to do with. The property line moving over, but in doing so, you're gonna see this new addition, if approved by you. In all of the new technical drawings, everything will be there.
Mike, Mike Murphy. Do you have any issue with this as far as issuing a, I mean, assuming we give a. Conditional approval for the bump out. Uh, so that he would go to building permit, or maybe he's already applied for the building permit. Do you see any issue here, Mike?
No, I don't see any issues, the only concern I have is. We gotta look into the surety, which is currently existing, uh, it was transferred into a bond. Lance and I have had some communication on that, along with Chris Lynn, and we just gotta review it again before anything else moves over.
What do you want to do, board?
Can we do something like a, I mean, it's not technically a condition, but it's just like documenting what. We've discussed here where, like if we were in alignment to approve. It would have to be reflected in subsequent future plans based on. You know, full site plan adjustments or some like, just documenting.
Yeah, I, I'm sort of thinking the same thing.
What assurance do we have that this will come back?
This gentleman's telling you that, but beyond that, none. But I wanna, before we talk about how can we do it, let's talk about. What would need to be done to make it a site plan that would be legal and eligible for approval? Uh, Sarah, can you talk about what, what the difference between this is and what we require in site plans?
Yeah, so, I mean, we do have.
I don't, in terms of the magnitude of each deficiency, maybe it's not a big deal, maybe it is, I don't know, but.
I mean, I'm not an engineer, but all I can say is, you know, you've all seen our checks, right? So we have, we have a list of requirements that are supposed to be moved on every site plan, um, that are including. A number of details depending on what they're proposing to do, stormwater stuff they need back, which. I don't think it applies here, but. He's requesting a waiver from the requirement to provide a site. I don't know where that.
No, I'm sorry, this is requesting a waiver.
From the professionally prepared stamp.
Actually, it's, it's different than having a site plan that conforms to the requirements in our town code. To one of the requirements for a site plan in our town code is that it be professionally prepared. If it's over ten thousand dollars worth of construction, I think. But then there are other requirements, one of which, and all of the companies that have a north directional on it, this one does. I don't know what else there is, and. What, what else would need to be done to make this something that conforms to some of our technical.
So you're kind of getting a, making it as close to professionally prepared site plan, but without the stamp of an engineer, so it has the north. Date, uh, who prepared it, whatever.
What address it is.
Well, Eric, we did have, um, the original site plan is there in part of this whole packet that we provided that was prepared by. Mark's engineering, like there it is, there's everything that was recently prepared and approved. All our details needed are there, other than. The one bump out, which we had to ask for permission to give you, that, that's, that's where we're at. If we can make it conditional to get approval, that we'll be back within a year with complete engineering drawings, including this. This is where we're at, this is a point where we're at right now, that.
I'm sorry, and I'm, I'm the last person, I want, I want you to be able to do this.
No, I know.
Um, and this is something. Um, and this is something. Yeah, I've been working on with you for years to get, I mean, you guys were little. When you, I mean, it wasn't a big deal when you started. It was just starting to become a house. Something pretty great. Um, we need something that conforms to some of the requirements. Uh.
A conditional approval. In this, uh, CFO, if CFO until. When the plan is submitted, but you, you probably, if you, you, you're going to start turning dirt as soon as you get your approval. You probably got to be ready to move in that building. One, one and a half, something like that.
Well, I mean, it's gonna take time and we're not going to play out there when it's five degrees out. Now, we're, we would, you know, we're, we would like to work with, with Mike and, and. Okay, Mike, this is what we're going to do. This, I want to do it. He'll be there. We'll bother him every day. Put it up. And once it's up, yeah, we're wanting to utilize it. But you know, there's, it's going to take a little bit to build it. It's not going to happen in a month.
Yeah.
I'm not Ryan.
Architectials or. Mike, do they require stamped architectural plans to build?
Uh, not so much architectural, it'd just be engineering on the steel. Um. For something like this, it's really going to be cost dependent. Um.
I can get, I can get those drawings from any other major ro- 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 I mean, I, I do every building that they have. We, we blast in paint, everything they make. So. I can get an engineer drive for that building.
Just one comment for the board too. We would still require to close out even the original. Uh, site development permit, an as-built survey to be provided by a licensed surveyor prior to CFO or CFC. So that requirement still stands with the original permit. The addition would be a subsequent permit where we would require that as well.
So there's no change in purpose. Which to me would be a critical element of having a site plan engineered.
Mike, you've been to this site, right?
Several times.
Yes, and it's all asphalt, it's all driveway.
Yep. Yeah, drainage is not a concern in my department.
Right. Yeah, I, I don't think any of the. The issues that we look as a planning board are being affected that much by this bump out. So that's, I think, the good news. Um, and we're not asking for additional paving, we're not actually asking for additional stormwater runoff controls. Um, additional landscaping, uh, anything in that regard. So it's really just. Literally just putting the bump, bump out on the side of the building.
Okay, so.
Got to fix the technicality on the boards then, if you want to.
So maybe that, that has to plan.
Could that be done?
Well, you guys have to, to approve a site plan. You have to make some decisions. Is there safe and efficient vehicular and pedestrian access with this? Can you tell if there is? Again? Everybody in consent.
Yeah, I think it's not an issue.
Yeah.
Is there sufficient space for onsite parking, loading and unloading and similar activities?
Yes.
There's enough space there that you're not concerned where it's been. Okay. Adequate emergency access. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes, to the building or to the site?
Both.
Oh, the building, I believe, the code.
Go to the color one? Please. It's not blocking any additional.
No, no, and as far as ingress and egress is building, it's up to code.
Okay. Proper, well, you still have to be comfortable to go into the building. Proper drainage. Eric, did you have comment on that?
We didn't look at this. But you weren't concerned in the hall, were you?
It's, well, you got roof cutters coming down.
Where's the water go?
Right in that corner where.
It currently goes here.
Now.
There's a store in there?
There's, yeah, it comes across on the ground here. It's right here. And that's one reason we made it sixty foot. How do we get put everything right to that corner?
It literally is all going right in the same spot.
Now, you don't know that there's sufficient capacity, but. You do have previously approved.
Uh, everything that lands on that ground goes in that storm. So now everything lands on the roof goes in a storm. So you can't, it does not one drop difference.
Right. It's, it's concrete now, it'll be roof in the future, right?
It's gonna be roof going to the same spot.
Still in purpose.
In purpose, still is.
No change in purpose. That's it.
Safe and sufficient water supply. Same water supply.
Change. Hope so.
Proper sewage disposal.
No sewage.
Same sewage disposal that we had before.
Yep.
Proper access to other available utilities such as gas, electric and telephone. Comfortable down?
Yep.
Resulting, resulting development will not have an undue negative impact on the safety and efficiency of the existing road network. Same. Now, six thousand square feet. How many employees are you putting in? How many more employees does this add to your?
Uh, we are on top of each other, but there was five added in the last six months, so probably two more.
It'll just give what you've got so far or previous.
We work on big stuff, so we need to develop big stuff in big areas.
Uh, proposed development is designed to. Minimize modification of existing landforms. Seems like we're comfortable there.
Mm-hmm. Just to, just for clarity on the question, yes, everything is paved over there. When I look at that access where you're parking now. The roadway that comes in off what you're calling an egress.
This was never here. We got approval to put this all. So our apartment is now here. People come in and drive through like your, your customers and that. Large semi trucks come in here, we load them, but.
Is that gray, gray area?
That's, yeah, that's a loading platform.
Trucks go on top of it.
No, they come here and we, we, we form those stuff.
Understood. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what happened to that, that egress point. It looks like if I scale it just by looking at the aerials. That it'll, the building's going to come almost all the way over to the. The trees and things that are there now? Is that accurate?
No, it's got ninety feet or wha- whatever is in the original platform. Plus, remember, we bought fifty more feet, so that's moving over actual property.
Well, hey, you haven't bought it yet. Still, you do not own.
I do not.
So.
Tomorrow I.
We're just pulling, I pulled up a Google Earth. I don't know if you want to pull it up. So when you look at this, I know that this is all changed in the front because I've been out of sight. Um. How far out is it? Can, do we lose access to that?
No.
Does it say grass?
Grass is, is fifty-one feet.
The grass is fifty-one feet. Okay, that's what I was.
Yes, it runs over, but it's not, you've still got thirty-five feet of asphalt.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that access to that one side of the building, that's.
If we move all our junk out of the way, that'd be more.
That's true.
Yeah, we got to put them inside.
Outdoor lighting. You having any lights on the building?
We have lighting.
On the new building.
Uh, we will have.
Okay. Everyone's comfortable with, there'll be some lights. Agriculture shoreline development. Okay, that's. I would recommend if you're going to approve, it'd be conditioned on town engineer sign off. Or any and all comments. Um. And signature lines being added for chair, engineer. I don't know if it's in videos.
I don't know, we're. Gotta review this one, you mean.
Somebody should.
Home force master? I mean, they, these weren't referred to as. Reason.
I would recommend that the town engineer reviews.
Okay, how are we going to handle this? We're going to grant a waiver for the, uh. Professionally prepared plan, or do we want to somehow conditional at the, at some point in the. Not too distant future that a amended plan be submitted. Incorporating the bump out and any other improvements.
Can, can the amended plan be somehow wrapped into the as-built?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, no, so if you're going to grant a waiver, it doesn't need an amended plan.
No.
I mean, you're saying this is, this is site plan.
Well, what we heard was that because the property line is going to change, that the, the plan is to do. An engineer.
Overview the whole property.
Update.
Yep.
I guess the question that I'm asking again, is there a way to wrap this around into. As-built that is part of the original approval. Of the site.
That's what I was thinking, is that as-built could be essentially. An amended site, it would be the amended site, and it would show the all encompassing and everything that. Was proposed and exists on the site.
I think it would just be an ad, an eventual as-built would show. This addition, the current addition, the new addition and future development. Wouldn't be an amended site, it would just be an as-built showing of it. Maybe all of.
I think it should address that. There was no change in, in impervious, therefore. The existing, um, uh, drainage plan was sufficient, you know, it should address the, the issue. And, and the things that we might look for in the amended site.
So what you're approving though, is whatever the impervious is that's shown with. Um. If you think it might not be.
We, we're not.
Now it's up, then we're not. We're being approved.
We're a board. We're, we're not professional engineers to be able to look at a picture and say, well, that's okay. If the town has this wraparound on the backend, requires an as-built, and the as-built should also include. The amended site.
It will be the amended site, essentially. Yeah. Mike, Murph, when do you require that as-built?
So we require the as-built prior to certificate occupancy. Now, your as-built would be based off of should the board grant the amended approval. It would have to encompass everything from Mark's engineering site plan, which was approved in twenty twenty-two as. In. As well as whatever gets approved possibly tonight.
You can specify, but I, I'm not trying to be obstructionist. You can specify what you would like to see in an as-built in a planning board site plan approval condition. But. You can't require an additional or a new site. This is the site plan. No matter what it is, whether it's been reviewed by engineers or not. Um, this is it. This is your one and only site plan for this addition. In the few, you can say the as-built survey shall show the following information. But it would be up to the code enforcement officer to determine if what's built complies with this, not with what's supposed to be. Or, you know.
And you just.
He goes out.
Can you say any additional improvements of the property after this point need to have? Engineered drawings?
Yeah, maybe.
If that would make the board happy as well. We know it's all coming down the line.
You know, we're, we're trying to come up with some way to help you.
I don't find, I still feel like the board is taking all the risk. Well.
Yep, I. You know, if you're comfortable that this. Provides all the stuff that we just went over.
How big is the risk then? That we would be taking, like. It, I mean, I, I would think of it as. You know, he's been before us before in twenty twenty-two. It's completed eighty-five percent. The work, working on the last fifteen, I have. I have confidence that. What he says will be implemented and then in the future, right, his, his plans in the future to come forward with. The full comprehensive site, I have confidence in that. Our risk is minimized. But how to, but I just want to make sure that we're. Diving eyes, crossing Ts, all that fun stuff.
Well. I mean.
What is the risk? You'd have to yank my CFO and tell him to take a building down? I mean, what, what is the risk?
Um, so. The risks are that what's shown doesn't provide sufficient detail. To, for the. Town staff to enforce what has been approved. Code enforcement officer said he's comfortable. Um. You know.
So code enforcement will cover all fire safety, all structural, uh, you know, that's.
Now. People who know about this, people sitting by right and overview. Tim, you seemed more comfortable about it before I started saying, no, no, you can't, you can't make them do that after that. As. As did you, Mark, and you, you four still seem fairly comfortable with it. Uh, you know, if it was in the RLD, I don't think anybody would be comfortable with it.
Right.
Um, if it was on the side of a slope, I don't think anybody would be comfortable with it, but. There seemed to be a comfort level before I started saying, no, no, you can't do that. Um, you can't have, make them do an amended site plan approval, because this is your site plan. If you're comfortable, you know, what, what do you usually worry about for a segment? It's a lot of drainage that you guys. Um, spend time on. Um, and make your technical, uh, experts spend time on. And applicants, engineers spend time on. Um, you know. Ingress, egress, safety. Uh, lighting, you know. Um, you know, it's, yeah, it's a risk that this doesn't provide sufficient definition. Um, but it's a risk that you, it's up to you whether or not.
I, I have to deal with Mike's. I can't do anything outside of what he says. So he says, no, I don't want that there. I want that there. I have to do what he says.
Yeah, but he can't, he can't enforce anything that we don't put on the paper. We learned that a few too many times too.
We're asking for a sixty by one hundred addition. And if he doesn't like the fiery grass or he doesn't like this or that, he has to, he can't enforce that on me.
I think the, uh, the things that I would just want to see on something eventually before CFO is issued is, and it looks like it all complies with things like setbacks. I think that because it's already all impervious. Not overly concerned about the drainage. Whatever happens next with the berm and everything else is what happens next. And we deal with it at that point as long as we're not disturbing any of that now. So it stays on the existing paved surfaces. Downward lighting is something that I would suggest because of where it is. So.
I do, I do run the airport, so I'm good with that.
McCarrion works with you.
Yeah.
For disclosure, my son has worked with Mr. Davis.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, so we know about down lighting. We're good there.
But just even adding that, just putting those notes on to make sure that they're there, it's, it's a no.
Well, and that's why I'm asking that MRB group look at this, because some of that might need to be done. Before construction starts, not professionally prepared, but if. You know, if there's a dimension that MRB says, you know, your code enforcement officer shouldn't know that. Know what you guys were thinking when you approved. They put it in a comment letter, you have to add it, you can, you know, add it.
Right.
And then, then we get signed, but that's what I'm thinking. I don't care though.
Hey Chuck, this is Bob.
Yeah, Bob.
My only comment on that is, uh, the only way to make sure that we get what we want from them is with conditions. Uh, and that's the only way. If we just say we're going to do that, we're not going to be able to hold them to that. So my only thought is it's always best to have it in the, in the conditions.
And, and I agree, and that's the other reason I'm suggesting MRB looks at it is because. They, they're the, generally the entity that can come up with new conditions as. Plans progress towards signature. Um, Chuck. Against every fiber of Chuck's being, I insist that we not date the engineers' comments letters anymore, so that they can produce new comments through the process.
Well. Uh. Yeah, I, if it would, if it was just, you know, that, that would scatter somewhere and you're putting a vision on an industrial building. Uh, given what the review we went through back in twenty-two, which I think MRB. Did that review and we looked at the.
Did that review, and we looked at the, you know, the retention, the runoff. And how much that approval is being affected by this addition, I think is minor. And. Not concerned about it in any way affecting the approval and the integrity of what was approved then. For this addition, I think it's more just. It's procedure, I guess, and that's that's really what it comes down to, and. Since we did have a site plan. It was approved, was signed, is up record, and we're going to change that site plan to some degree. That should be reflected at some point. Uh, maybe not now, but maybe with the as built that submitted at some later date. And that. If it's, if the as built submitted prior to the issues of the CFO, that would make sure that that plan was submitted before a CFO was issued. Which is something we try to cover, uh, quite frequently in our conditions. Then certain items to be done before CFO is issued. So. How we put that into this resolution. Leave it up to our. Filing author of resolutions, Mr. Cooper, to maybe include, is that something the board can get on board with?
I don't know, alignment and agreement.
Does that sound good to you, Mr. Attorney?
I think so.
Okay, we're, that covered. Okay, well.
You're not going to have a delay in getting asked on by an engineer.
So we've.
It doesn't cost forty grand.
We would waive these professionally prepared statements, so we're not requesting an air. But we would make it as a condition. Uh, of the approval that prior to the issues of CFO, a as built plan showing. All work proposed be be shown and submitted. Now, I, there's nothing I'm going to be, there's nothing as the chairman I'll be signing, right? Because there's no.
So the as built won't show like the proposed work, it will basically just show all the information that's been constructed. In accordance with the requirements of chapter two twenty. Sixty nine and seven, which is the preliminary final checklist.
Okay.
Basically. Is what was built.
But also all the setbacks and.
Yeah.
Okay. While you're composing that, the lot line adjustment, you said that's been submitted and.
It's a done deal, I literally have to write the check.
Otherwise, we'd have to make that as a condition.
Well, it's been filed.
Yeah, I do have that as opposed to actually that being signed and filed with the interior county and copy of the.
Okay.
They got, they got. Like three days ago.
Murph had brought up the solar roof control security. Uh, where that stands, whether it has to be renewed, extended, changed. Uh, is that, it's probably an issue we should put on this approval. Murph, what do you want to see there?
Uh, you can just make a condition that my office, uh, in coordination with the town clerk and MRB will review the. Submitted surety as for. The amended site plan.
Okay.
Something along those lines is fine with us, and then we'll see if it's still, if the bond needs to be renewed or not.
Yeah, the status of the existing.
We can continue the bond as long as needed. If it needs to be adjusted, that's where we would need to know. Really, we want to raise it or whatever they want.
Well, maybe the the plannings that you would promise to the town should maybe be added to that, to the hedgerow.
If that's going to be a whole, that's, 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 that is a major project. So that's going to be an entire, here's your site plan, here's all your goodies, there you go, but that, I have to work with. The town because of this.
Yeah, I saw the letter.
Working together on that, so that's a whole different.
Gosh, okay.
There won't be any plants planted in this particular.
Uh. Are you not touching anything that's already there along this side?
I can't until we get approval. I can't do anything with that. So I immediately need to push that wall out, so we have more space, and then next thing, have engineers do work on. The rest of them.
Okay.
We can't do anything. Nor will we.
Okay, we, anybody in the audience want to address the board regarding this application? The twenty four ninety five Brickyard? I'm going to be a chinler here. Uh, nobody in the audience, okay, we're back to the board. Board, are you ready to make a motion? Uh, we're looking at a. Unlisted seeker. So I will make a motion that. This board has determined that this application is classified as unlisted action. And the applicant has submitted part one. Of the process, and the town has prepared part two and three. And what is that we adopted as an unlisted action? I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion second for the discussion on the seeker. Hold favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, let's move on to. The site plan. Hopefully. We can definitely move on. Somebody want to make a motion, or why don't you give us the conditions you have now? Eric, in terms of. Before we make the motion.
Condition three, uh, to just modify to to re-s soil stabilization, erosion control, surety estimate shall be reviewed through by the town of. I will review. By the town CEO, engineer, town engineer, town clerk. Reviewing process and the solution of law nineteen. If you're looking at wording a little bit, the idea basically kind of. Get them out of what might have said, so it'll be reviewed by the court enforcement, us and the town clerk. And then whatever kind of determination come out with this guy is, this is going to be good or it's going to change. Uh, condition four, a lot lined up with flat, so we file in the interior county clerk's office and a sheet of filing, office. Decision five, lighting for the proposed building, uh, shall be full cut up and planned with chapter two twenty seventy seven, which is light chapter. Now, town engineer to review plans and provide comments. Shall be addressed by the signatures and fixing plans. Seven, the as no drawing shall show all information required to demonstrate compliance of town code, chapter two twenty, art seven of this site plan.
Okay. I'm sorry, uh, line number one. Uh, at the end of the sentence, you mentioned the word site sketch plans. We're not really dealing with any sketch plans. Waiting for professionally. But it is a, you're essentially rendering, I guess. This applies, okay. Everybody get that?
Yes.
Do they need to have a funding or anything? Just.
Okay, Chris, you okay with the conditions of? Okay, then I'm ready for a motion, based on those conditions.
I'll make that motion with the single stage site plan. Um, approval of twenty four, one, two, five, with the seven conditions as we've discussed. Twenty four ninety five per cure.
I'll second. Okay, motion second for the discussion. If not, one favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thanks, Richard.
Thank you for digging through that, I know it was difficult, but appreciate it.
I guess we'll see you in the future.
Good seeing you.
All right, moving on. We have the. Two related application, one involving a subdivision and the other involving a site plan. Uh, the subdivision requiring a public hearing. It is for C P N twenty twenty four, one twenty eight. Nathan, Wayne, William, Brian?
William.
William, Brian, Brian. Uh, call you Nate. And you're seeking subdivision approval to subdivide a property into two lots. One being three point two acres with an existing home, and the other being eleven point eight acres, you know, they can pot. Where you propose to put another, a new home, which is the subject of. C P N twenty four, one thirty one, which is a site plan for the construction of a single family home. So. Let's. Take the subdivision first. You folks want to?
Yeah.
Tell us a little bit about what you intend to do out there on Thomas Road?
Absolutely, so we've lived, uh, down Thomas Road since two thousand and one. Uh, we own the last bit of family history, my family, the Van Truce, um, owned a lot of land around this area, so. It's really near and dear to my heart to still own the land, so want to build our dream home, so three point two acres, we're looking to subdivide, which is the house and the barn. And then in the existing lot next door, um, put our new residential home on there, kids are getting grown, so. Looking just to have something so that we can retire with, um, and then obviously, once the house is built, uh, we have an existing relationship with, uh, Seth and Garrett Pritchard up at Kettle Farms. Um, it's very important to us to still continue to have it in farm around us.
Okay. So. Was there any thought given to how you came up with that lot configuration? Uh, any reasoning or just?
Reason being is, uh, for one, the the hedgerow on the. The bottom corner there, there's a telephone pole there, so that's a a line that can be set easily defined. Um, the front one is like eighteen feet off a telephone pole, so it's easy, so there's no discrepancy to say that, and then. I went off the back corner of the barn like thirty, I think it's thirty one feet, I think I needed twenty five feet. And then. I didn't want to fill the pond back in, I thought that I should go with the house. So we just wanted to skirt around it so that I didn't have that land landlocked, so I could still have access to that if I. Ever needed for the future.
Okay. Usually with a subdivision, we look at the property in terms of any natural resources that exist, uh. I think for the most part, I guess this is foreign land, so there's no trees or. Anything of any.
Technically, where that silo pad is right now is currently grass, it's yard. I'm looking to, uh, convert that back into farmland to help make up for. The loss of what we'd be taking for building our house, so, you know, right now we got more yard, we're looking to get rid of some of the yard. Turn it back into. Farmland. That's what shows that that round, um, back corner of the barn there, that's a silo, there was a, it says silo pad, it was an old rain dryer. I'm looking to remove that.
Yeah, you said you're going to remove it, okay. Uh, on the eastern end, end of the property, you have the Beaver Creek.
Yes.
I think that's just a, it really doesn't, is carry water all, except maybe during rainstorms.
Just during heavy storms.
Just just gets a heavy runoff from, uh, Dave's fields across the road down to it, really, it's. Summertime, it's pretty much just mopping, you know, when we get a heavy rain, oh.
Not classified plastic, classed east, you know.
It is a big one?
God, which is.
I believe that creek is actually on the top of acres, I don't own, I own to the bank of it, I believe.
Yeah. Well, one thing the subdivision plan needs is the two lots should be labeled as lot one and lot two. But right now, there's no lot numbers assigned to them.
Okay.
So we can distinguish, uh, between the two lots, you know, lot. Or lot being, having an existing home, so I think that's one condition. It should be shown.
My question that my engineer, I guess, must have, well, we talked about that last time, was it should be an A and B?
Uh, yeah, A and B, one, two, yeah. Seeing how you, normally we also ask for in subdivision. A future driveway location and a site distance, I know, uh, green engineering provided, I think in the. Uh, description, the narrative, uh, site, it's from the existing driveway. But seeing that you know where the new driveway is probably going to go, probably good to show that. On the subdivision plan.
Okay.
Okay, just out, out at the throat, out at the road.
Okay.
And whatever site distance is affiliated with that.
I did see a reference to, um, I think, old standard. For stopping site distance, so I've also asked that your engineer. Update the site distance to the current requirements, their asphalt. I think that four hundred and fifty feet is the old standard. It's, it's great, and you have the frontage to 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 move that driveway to maximize, because that hump in the road. You know, we've lived there, you know, condition. Uh, not that this is a lot, I can, can't imagine there's a lot of traffic on.
Yeah. Well, we picked the, um, location for that because it's close to the telephone pole, so as far as running the utility. To the transformer, it seemed like it was going to be a straight. That, and then it's easier to farm around persons having to go, the driveway go on an angle, you know, coming from down the hill back up. It's going to make more. You know, like a lollipop in the center is easier to farm around.
No, no, I, I do understand.
Farmers like straight lines, they don't like diagonals.
I know. I know, but your engineer's got to have the right number.
Okay.
You notice that the. Lot areas of the two lots on this plan is different than the lot areas on the site plan. Pull up the site plan.
Is that because it's eight acres?
I'm not sure, maybe it has to do with the roadway of the road, uh, where the title line is for this, the lot. Subdivision. Yeah, can you read that, Eric? Sorry, with a lot with the new houses?
Over your mind, sorry.
This is a.
It says eight point two five, four acres.
Okay, so you go back.
And then on the.
The subdivision. It's eleven something.
Yeah.
And I, I wondered that in my head, too, with my engineers, so that that should, I don't know if he's trying to say that that's going to be that field. Area that it's in.
On the east side.
That's.
Just to show that, that there's at least eight acres around the house. I can have him switch that to eleven.
Yeah, they should agree, I mean, I I think probably what he's not including the, uh.
The little triangle.
The triangle.
Yeah, three acres on the side.
Toward the riverine line?
Yeah.
I assumed that he had a stamp and seal, I was just not going to question.
Okay. So back to the subdivision, uh. And I guess. The area in that triangle is going to be remain to be farmed.
We're going to keep that, it's being farmed currently, I don't want to keep it, um, so there's a little. So this is the existing. This is the existing yard right here. This will go in the house, we'll learn, try to keep container apartment. This will go in the house. We'll learn and try to keep container apartment. And once the house is sold, let them keep farming it and see what you do. But this triangle's gonna go, it's currently grass. It's gonna go back in the field. Like I said, I'm just trying to keep as much of a, they're not making land anymore. I want to keep as much of it till as possible.
Okay.
I don't wanna see some, selling off all that and then somebody growing weeds, you know, make sure nothing but grass and weeds growing all around me and shrubbery and.
Not maintained.
That's been what I'm having.
I wanna see if they got it all going over.
Anything else on the subdivision?
Nope.
No? Nope. Uh. Yeah, and I guess the other reason you sort of got that U-shaped lot is if you, if you made it into three lots, you wouldn't have frontage on your triangle lot.
Yeah.
So again, the new home's gonna be your house.
Yes.
You're building that. So you'll own that. And then you'll sell the existing.
Yeah.
Okay, that's our.
Yep, our pensions.
We're just looking to settle down and have a ranch, something that I can spend the rest of my days in and not go up and downstairs when I'm too far, too gone to do it.
Okay, so let's, does anybody in the audience wanna address the board regarding this application for subdivision? Or fifty eight sixty Thomas Road? If not, I'll close the public hearing on the subdivision. Let's oh, let's see, we got a seeker.
Yeah, seeker unlisted.
Yeah, the seeker's related to Booth, I guess, but I guess we can take care of the seeker. It's an unlisted action. Someone wanna have at it?
Just.
Somebody pulled it up?
I'll make that, we'll get in the chat. For the unlisted action, the seeker, CPN twenty four one twenty eight. I'm in three one.
I will second that. For the seeker.
Okay, you have a motion second, just checking. I know there's some different plans floating around on this. I think the, the subdivision is the October thirty first plan. So that's, that's the one that's showing you. Okay. Got motion second? All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Post subdivision, Garrett. You're almost there. All right, let's.
Seeker carries.
Oh, seeker, I'm sorry.
Now we can do the subdivision and then we'll talk site plan and then we'll do the site plan. Yeah.
We went through.
Let, let, let me, yeah. Let me just keep us moving along here. I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision, the single stage subdivision for CPN twenty four one two eight comma one three one. I believe we have a couple of additional conditions that we would like to add around adding the lot number designations, lot one or two, or one or A or B, whatever. Adding the driveway cutout in the proposed newly created U-shaped lot. And the site distance for the, with the new requirements. And I don't know if we want to stay here in the subdivision. The lot areas to match across.
I would suggest we only, so that you make sure that's corrected on both of them.
And although I was rattling those off, I did not count. That's fine. With five conditions.
I'll second that.
I, I did notice this is way down. Some of the subdivisions.
Oh.
Conditions.
Yeah, number six.
We are handling this by week.
Check it stamp.
Good catch, Kim.
I never saw that either.
He'll be getting a call from me tomorrow.
I'll, I'll make a second on that, Chuck.
It's okay. Got motion second on the subdivision? All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Post. Okay, two thirds away there. All right, let's talk a little bit about the site plan. Kim, I didn't see anything from ECB. I know you, you must have discussed it. I didn't go back and look at your minutes. I was looking more in cloud permit. There was nothing there. If, if there's anything of concern. Did you find anything more?
Did not.
Okay. Uh, I'm sure the ag committee expressed maybe concern of a little bit of lost land, but I don't think to the point that it's catastrophic. You are keeping the triangle. Excuse me? Okay, that's all we did say. Okay, then let's see what else we've got.
I'm actually not convinced that Ag got that either, Chuck.
There's not any.
I didn't see notes on either one of them. I didn't see any other.
I know what happened with them. Initially, this was at the November PRC meeting. And it was scheduled to be at the December tenth or whatever, planning board meeting. But the request for information at that PRC of stuff to be included, which ultimately wasn't met by the Fwind and the engineer, sent delayed. You're hearing this until but the ECB and the ag committee, I think in that discussion in November, wouldn't have heard it in December in time for the planning board here. It's always goes, the planning board here prior to them ECB and the ag committee. But with date shifting, with, I'm not sure that it was, but it ended up getting referred to ag committee or the ECB just with the shift from the, to finish. I don't know if that makes sense, but basically there's a couple of parts of it. But.
Okay. Well, we can probably assume what the ag committee would say.
Yes, yeah, that's, anything of loss of agricultural lands than the community are ideal.
Well, and the community encourages growth.
Absolutely. The less grass, the better.
I'd rather live in the middle of a cornfield and look at corn and mow grass.
Mowing grass.
Okay, so other things related to the site plan?
Have some impressive.
How you making out with your?
Yeah, yeah.
Keep water in that hole for the septic test.
How you making out with your septic with the DOH? Has the engineer submitted the?
It should be all on there. It came on data per cast and.
Okay, just, but he, as far as actually getting a certificate or approval from the DOH?
That's pretty fast.
You're gonna, you're gonna need a permit to build the, build the system and I.
I know he came on, did the percast and seen that site plan and showed all that.
Right.
And I just, I.
Yes, the DOH would do the septic something. Is this somebody's guy? Uh, it's like it's an in brown. It's a convention rates of one minute.
It looks like our, our department said it was gonna be set to sweat on the bottom. I think this is the one where they put their findings in. They found themselves just. Yeah, they put their findings in.
While they're talking about, one of your plans had a collection system for the roof drains and an outlet pipe going over toward the Beaver Creek and then a subsequent plan that went away. So you're, I think you're just putting the roof drains on splash box. Is that your intent?
That's what I wanna do. As far as the, I wanted to do a gravity drain from the basement borders. You know, instead of the cell pump.
Okay. Just, uh. Keep it away from your septic system. Cause I think that, that collection plate, it's just is that north, just north of the septic system?
Yeah.
Is that the right plan?
We uploaded a brand new one, just, um, because it, we, we had to, we had to put easement on it.
Yep.
As far as, um.
Yeah, your engineer submitted a letter on the twenty ninth, I think it was January. And he said, I took care of these items, which I think were concerns of, but then never saw the plan.
Yeah, I've had it.
Uh, that, you'll see, that's just a letter.
That's from December. Yeah.
So we had to submit one just this, just this morning that showed that, that, um, where the meter fit is. Jim Fletcher wanted me to just have that that was listed as an easement on the, on the.
Did you, where did they put it?
This has been very, uh.
In the building, I think. Think there is one, is there?
Maybe about. Yeah, I uploaded it today. Maybe I I apologize. Oops.
I'm good at building stuff with computers. I.
Chuck, if I may?
Shirley, whoever speaking?
Bob.
Bob, you got the floor?
Thank you. Just, I couldn't see it on the plan. How long is your driveway?
It's, I think it's about four hundred and thirty foot setback. It should. Pretty sure I see it around there somewhere. It's like four, four hundred and four feet setback. Four, four hundred and four?
Okay, that's what I thought. I'm looking at it on my iPad, but, um, for anything over two hundred and fifty feet, you're gonna have to have a pull off required department, according to the code.
I think it's five hundred. The pull offs at two hundred and fifty feet.
And their comments from January twenty ninth, they indicate that they have added it, but that's why I think we need those planned.
Yeah, we just. Okay. So it's less than five hundred? I'm sorry?
I think it's five hundred or over. Mike can correct me, but I'm pretty sure it's five hundred or over. Pull up that's new, provided every two hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
And there is four hundred.
Four hundred. Thank you.
But I think that Mike asked for that, that's why they.
He did, and yeah, there's a note from Land Surveying that indicated that they were added to the plan on January twenty third to twenty five. But we don't have the.
So you said you uploaded the plan into cloud permit? I did, and usually like I get an email updating that it's, you know, I updated something.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
It's not in the subdivision. I don't know that now.
It's not.
That's, the letters is the subdivision. I have to pull the email up on my phone to get the PDF files. I know, know how to. How to do it.
Well, um, you know, one of the conditions that we've proposed here is that the code for such comments be addressed prior to signing the plan. So so long as they do submit it afterwards and meets these things. Hopefully, we're concerned to be.
Yeah, and they said in that letter of January twenty ninth that they leave that they edit it.
Yeah.
They just need to.
Yeah, I don't think I put it in, so if you scroll up, I think I put it in where like attachments. Then.
I mean.
Yeah.
What was the thought process on when you were hoping to start the project? Um, so right now we're at the stages of dealing with the bank. And you can't deal with the bank because when I pull equity from the house and you take land from the house. Yes. So you get a subdivision then. So we're in the process of hoping for April. I guess all that I'm asking, so, I mean, your subdivision has been approved. So that's your step for the bank for that. Should we look at the site plan, give Ag, give, give ECB, give, uh, everybody a chance to comment on it, get the correct drawing and.
If we're not in a time crunch.
If we're not.
Or if they're not in a time crunch.
Yeah, we can't break ground until we say, well, that can't.
Yeah.
And just.
It's fine. I, yeah, if the board feels they wanna see the plan and they wanna have ECB and Ag.
We probably have the plan right here. I just don't know, but how to, you know, upload it.
And I'm sure it'll be fine. It's just getting the chance to look at it, to have that review of it and that discussion of it. Yeah. Oh, yeah, driveway's good. Okay, you saw that. We did that. You know, we're checking all the conditions off the list.
Why, you wanted to do a continuation of, same duration? Yeah, we can. If it doesn't affect, you know, these folks. Doesn't sound like it would.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing.
It would be two weeks. Twenty fifth.
Well, it's not.
Oh.
Or. So.
It's on March.
March eleven.
March eleven.
And it's still. It's our meeting. Unless, I mean, had a special request of the chair. We had need to add this to this meeting. Do you think that we were accepting that or?
I'm, I'm more concerned about seeing the amended plan than necessarily.
Kidding.
The ag committee.
Yeah.
Would you wait until March? Ask about recently. I mean, there's time. The March eleven meeting would be after the ECB. You just would run the risk of not having the comments yet.
Kim, do you feel there's something here that DCP would wanna look at? Be concerned about it? I mean, it's.
It's farmland right now. It's E line stream.
Yeah, I was gonna mention.
There's issues or anything like that on the property.
No.
Just probably our standard suggestions of.
They do.
Make sure you use native plating.
Um, we do ask people to try and do things with the streams, just to try and mitigate extra water rains. Because we have large storms.
More option than.
Well. I was gonna, since it is a blue line string, I was suggesting that we have the setback. Make sure that's on the plan.
Yeah, yeah.
That should be. Stream setback. And you're nowhere near, you're not near it anyway.
Do you, do you want the stream setback? I mean, it's easy enough, I'm sure for them to add it, but I think they show the setback to the side property line of like two hundred feet or so.
So, well, that's the other thing. That plan doesn't show any.
Yeah, this is the old one.
Yeah, this plan, there's a, there's an advice or revise.
Okay.
Plan in, I don't, maybe it's in the subdivision.
She says she wants, yeah.
He's been. An, an old mayor mall.
Yeah.
I could pull it up. I just don't know if somebody knows how to. You gotta, you gotta email it?
Yeah.
I could definitely, I could forward an email.
Yeah.
For the record, that plan does show the thirty foot paving, so that's been taken care of. So that's in that.
This one has the drive.
Off the, off the root edge.
Yeah, I don't know if this is, uh, more stiff than the ones you're looking at, more I'm looking at. I don't know. So what he did is eighty foot, um, right here, that's just, it serves as an easement.
Oh, for the order line, Dan? I'm looking, I'm looking at their vision date down there. Yeah, we just have a date there. Uh, one twenty nine, this is a revision date. So it is a different plan than what we have.
Still says Wayne County on there.
Well, I uploaded that. I have it in a PDF file. I have it in a PDF file, so.
Uh, between now and, well, I don't think ECB wants to see it, I I I don't wanna. Waste it another month, uh, waiting for the ag committee, I would like to see the revised plan. Uh, and have the board take action on. That plan or any other changes you're gonna make to it, uh, and we could do that on the twenty fifth.
Seven twenty five for the next meeting.
So is that okay with the board?
That works.
Okay, um, so we'll continue the, the site plan approval, you got your subdivision. Um, did take care, seek care of the covered both, well, primarily the subdivision. And so the only thing left hanging is the, excuse me, site plan. Which uh, hopefully we can take care of two weeks. Okay, if you can get us that revised plan. Excuse me? Get a continuation, two weeks. Sounds like they could do it tomorrow.
Yeah, I have, I can email it.
Yeah, just get it in the.
Well, we gotta take that revised plan and. We have to put those notes, I also have to call Mike, my. Engineer and have him put those, put those on it.
It, you know, they could otherwise be done as a condition of approval, but the ones I have noted, they're most consistent conditions are. The rise to direct the area of the lot, the rise to include the U line stream setback, and the rise to correct references from Wayne County and Montana. Is the site distance on this one?
Then it be, Chuck, did you see if the turnaround was added to that? No, just because you're gonna have them make changes, that would have to be added, should be added as well.
You wanna look and see if it is there.
Yeah, if you got.
Who is emergency pull off? About halfway up the driveway. All foot driveway.
It's got the paving out the, out the roof. Okay, seems to have most of the. What are those lines that are to the right of your house? That and the other one on the other side.
Silk fence? I think, I think he's got a silk fence for all we're building as far as runoff, runoff from the house is what I. I have to look at it closer, but.
No, it's not a way, it says disturbed area, it coincides with the low, the limits of disturbance.
Maybe he's just trying to say that it's closer, we don't have any runoff heading towards that, correct, with the silk fence.
Chuck, do you need a motion for a continuation?
I need a motion for continuation to the twenty fifth.
And just to confirm, this one is one three one, do you get two numbers on it?
The site plan is one three one.
I'll make a motion that we continue C P N twenty four dash one three one. To the twenty fifth of February.
Hopefully we can take you right up front, get you out of here, because it could be exciting meeting. Okay, all right, thanks, first.
We're running a little loose tonight, Chuck.
That brickyard threw me.
I didn't know it was so easy with the town of Canada playing board.
Easy peasy.
We're all cooperative.
Well, okay, now that you bring it up, and I want this for the record. I would strongly recommend that you no longer approve plans in that condition. The reason I say that is because the next guy's gonna come in and say, yeah, but you did it for this last guy. Now you have legal advice saying, please don't do that again, that's not the best plan. But let's, I strongly recommend you no longer do that. If that could make its way to the minutes, it's not attached to that application. Without saying, hey, we just did it something wrong, but in the future, we should try to.
Thank you, Mr. Naylor.
I agree. Hated, hated the whole guy back, it was so tempting. What? Delicious sausage. All right, so we can adjourn, right? Uh, we have, uh. I'll, I'll get down to other business just a second, guys. Which includes you, uh, let's do the minutes from the uh. Oh, okay. Yeah, but it's a continuation, okay, C P N twenty twenty four, one thirty seven. Big man La Rue Associates specifically agreed with that. For a site plan approval at thirty seven twenty nine, County Route sixteen. Um, I think this needs to be continued.
You could just direct that as chair, if you're comfortable, it's continued to this.
Uh, yeah, uh, this like, the history behind it is that they're gonna be at the Z B A next week. And. Do we do first meeting of the month or second meeting of the month for after Z B A? D B A on the eighteenth. I know we, we used to do it right after, and then that was too, too short. So it is first meeting, I'm unsure if we push it. All right, so uh, we would continue to the eleventh of March. I have a motion to that effect, and that would be predicated on the applicant being successful at the Z B A, so. Okay, motion second? Aye? Okay, we do have another one too, twenty twenty four, one forty nine Scott Herter. I guess I saw was he's, he's going back to the Z B A next. So part of the board, if you recall, we discussed this as a conforming. Our recommendation was in the minutes. Uh, basically saying that. Uh, the applicant was, uh, after talking to us, uh, was. Thinking about going back and back to the drawing boards and. And that's where we left it, so.
C B A continued it to February eighteen.
Right.
And I think what the discussion over here is, I don't know if he's gonna be there on the eighteenth or not.
Either way, why don't you push it to your.
Oh, yeah, that would be the March, March eleventh.
Subject to coming out of.
I think I got lost in time there, I was thinking. Time is flash, our whole recommendations was done, the changes he was.
Okay, so I need a continuation to three eleven.
So moved.
Second.
All favor? Okay, Bob, are you staying up with us?
Yep, thanks.
Okay.
He's behind us.
Yeah, he's, he's still got time to party.
Uh, okay, so now we're ready to move on to the, the minutes. From the twenty eighth of the last month. Any additions, corrections? Just thinking if there's something, if they found. I don't think so, okay, just got a motion second, all in favor? Thank you, Irene, for providing the minutes, um. Okay, now we're up to uh. Other business. And specifically, we're. Uh, going to look at the uptown landing. Whatever we have to do there tonight to keep this thing moving, I guess. And Matt and Sarah can tell us what we need to do.
Good evening, everybody, Matt Tomlinson, Marathon Engineering. Uh, we still have a lot of work to do, being Marathon and the design team, we're working diligently on addressing comments, but one of the things that we want to make sure happens is that. Um, our understanding of the form based code process is that the planning board. Has to uh, send this back to the town board, the town board looks at it potentially without taking action, but basically sends it back to the. Planning board, and then you guys can take action on it, so our goal is really to answer questions that the board may have and talk through a couple of items. And then the big piece that we wanted to make sure got before the board, or goes back to the town board, which I believe we're on an agenda for. February twenty fourth, uh, for a minor modification to the I Z as well as potentially obviously sending it back to you folks. Is to talk about the architecture, because we didn't really spend a lot of time on that, and a big part of the form based code is obviously. Uh, prescribed architectural features, transparencies, those kind of things, so Steve Cullen from Hamlin Architects is with us tonight. Uh, Jake Calabrese from my office is online, and then Ian and Jeff are here from the ownership team as well. Um, from a site plan perspective, uh, we were here before this board, obviously a couple of weeks ago. Um, and uh, a couple of the comments that were. I'll say notable in that they were things that the planning board was looking for was a trail connection. Uh, in between a couple of the single family homes between lots seven, eight and nine off of. It's really small, so I can't read it, but road B and C uh, area. Which has been added, uh, right now, we have that under easement, what we're gonna try to do is create a ten foot. Strip of land for that trail to reside on, so that it's on the same parcel as the multifamily and the stormwater management, so it's very straightforward that that'll be owned and maintained by. Uh, the management company for, for the apartments. The other connections or talk about pedestrian, uh, the piece of code that was quoted in that section. Um, related to a subdivision of land and blocks having minimum maximum lengths of, the form based code is actually specifically accepted out of. Uh, that piece of code, and um, I think there was talk about a potential mid block. Uh, connection between road D and E from a trail standpoint, which brings up. Um, some questions about who would maintain, where would people be going if they utilize that? Because the natural flow is towards the open space and um, the park, so again, that road C and road D makes all the sense in the world. Uh, from a road connection, but back in the residential subdivision, especially given that the form based code does not require. Or have the minimum and maximum um, block lengths requirement or is accepted from it. Uh, that is something that we have not added. Uh, we talked about a additional landscape buffer at the rear of the through lots, uh, backing to road A there, which will have in our revised plans. That are coming back to this board, uh, with all the comments addressed. And uh, some simple labels of stormwater management facilities, color coded easements and phasing, that kind of thing, so. Nothing really substantive from a, hey, we really don't like this, or hey, that really needs to be looked at, now I know that the board also requested. Uh, some hard copies, which I believe have been sent down to the town shortly after our meeting from a couple of weeks ago, so hopefully that. Assisted and facilitating, looking at all the material that we submitted a couple of months ago now. Um, so before I turn it over to Steve to really talk about the architecture and some of the um. Great work that he's been doing on the building, so is there anything that the board uh, has as a question or comments? That would preclude, I guess, the board from recommending this back to the town board for the twenty fourth.
Sort of feel that we've seen this enough, uh, between the uh, the comments and the recommendations on the Zemizoni. And uh, looking at the sketch plan from a sketch standpoint, I, I don't think that's an issue, uh, I appreciate. Uh, you're considering some of the things we talked about the last meeting. Uh, are there any items that the board felt that were brought up at that time that. Have not been addressed, that should be, could be a concern as we move into the detailed review of the uh, site plan and subdivision?
You know, the thing that I recall asking about was whether there's any veget, room to put some vegetatives, uh, buffer. Uh, on the north at property edge, because we had those property owners coming in that were concerned about. The intensity of the development, uh, and the impact it has to their property, so. I don't know, now's the time to talk about it, or.
Now is the time to talk about it.
Yeah, so, yeah, all of those, and I think this is how I answered it last time, all those, uh, all of the development along that north edge that borders the properties in question. And that, that does a good job of showing uh, the aerial and some of the existing vegetation outside of our property limits that obviously is not going to be touched. That also provides, provides a buffer, uh, all of those being single family homes, um, the majority of the landscaping or development. Within the single family homes is really oriented to the streetscape and street trees being provided, as there will be um, some vegetation left along that. That north property line, individual homeowners, of course, have all the right to. Uh, install fences, uh, put up trees, however they want to uh, further develop or enhance their backyards, but. Um, as of right now, there are no proposed uh, additional buffering plantings going up there, uh, because of the single family configurations.
So what you're showing along that, that north property one, um, is that low? Or is that low vegetation is what, how would you describe it?
Uh, to the uh, east, this is pretty substantial woods, uh, up through this area. This area is more brush kind of in keeping with the cover on the, on the site itself is currently today.
So it's hard to retreats.
Yeah. Agricultural field there to the north, um, with, with crops on it.
Yeah, because the, the property owner's concern was that. Their concern, what their worries were, that there might be. Um, homeowners. Um, encroaching onto the property and things like that, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we will be required to pin property corners, uh, in keeping with what the requirements of, of the town are. Um, and uh, I, obviously trespassing is trespassing, right, so that will be somewhat out of the developer's control. Once those are sold to the homeowners, but um, that would be something that uh, that would be an enforcement item, not necessarily a planned item.
I think at this point, take it as a concern or comment, uh, maybe when we get into the final review of that section. For this final subdivision, we can look a little closer and more specific as to. If anything is needed in terms of.
Sure.
Yes, uh, just one question on the phasing, I know you had proposed kind of a. Like one, two, three, four, five, is that good with the flow of the, the phasing? Have there been any potential changes to the phasing? Since we spoke a couple of weeks ago, I don't expect so.
Yeah, good question, I think we provided some further clarification on the number of units and number of uh. Number of units basically in the breakdown between each of those, um, which I believe might be up a couple of pages in here. And the um. Generally, the phasing of that is the same. Uh, we have taken into consideration and, and Mr. Naylor raised the concern about. Uh, potential for non dedicated street connections and those kind of things, um, and I believe that our phasing uh, plan allows for. Dedicated street connection through the neighborhoods, maybe not the whole spline road, but making sure that there is. dedicated street connection through the neighborhoods, maybe not the whole spline road, but making sure that there is adequate dedicated emergency vehicle access on how we have that broken up. So, um, yeah, and I I think that plan there provides a little bit of a breakdown of of which roadways would be constructed in which phase.
Matt, any of the issues that the neighbors brought up at the last meeting? Uh, I guess specifically the gun club, is that was the applicant any concerns?
No. No.
Were you aware that those of gun club probably flows?
I I was not, but it's not a, it's not a concern from our our standpoint.
Okay, anything else, um? I don't know if you want to go right. Eventually, you want some sort of informants or consensus that we agree that the sketch plan can go to the town board under the form-based code, uh, that we looked at it, where we made suggestions and we'd recommend that the town board send it back to us, which has already started that process.
Right. Yeah, and I and I really appreciate the board's input at the incentive zoning process, because I think we were able to incorporate a lot of those, uh, comments and discussion into the plan as it came back to you, so we're not changing it now. We've already gotten ahead of that, so that was very helpful to us as we tried to move the project forward.
So, like, Chris, what what does the board need? A just a consensus?
A consensus to some, but there's no requirement that the board shall you know, make a formal recommendation or referral.
Okay.
So why don't I?
So long as you guys don't see any barriers, I think your consensus will be assumed.
So why don't I have Steve come up, walk you through the architecture, and then we can answer any other questions.
We change our minds.
See, embarrassing.
Tell him not to talk at this.
Yeah, when you're hit, sir.
Bobby had to sign off. He said his questions were.
Okay.
Sorry.
I was hoping you pick it, pull up that one. Um, so this rendering, we actually did back in July, so in terms of look and feel, it's pretty accurate. Um, our mixed-use building is the far one and this, and it's got to be, uh, four stories total across the board rather than three stories facing road A. Um, so, and designing these buildings, we've really tried to keep with the form-based codes intense, keep the buildings close to the street. Um, use a lot of materials, um, like brick as as much as we could, simulated stone, um, the mixed-use building, and keep our transparency very high, which we we meet our proposed sixty percent on the ground floor um, and twenty-five percent on the upper floors. Um, materially, lots of brick, stimulated stone, vinyl siding, and painted trim throughout these buildings. The mixed-use building is four stories, hundred and five units. The ground floor has a mixture of commercial and amenity space along with an interior apartment garage. Um, and the upper floors are really just apartments. Um, for the apartment buildings, which we have eight of those throughout the phases, um, they'll be identical, but mirrored in some cases. There are three stories with um, single fam- or single-car garages, um, on the rear side of them, and six uh, apartment units on the first floor, and then the remainder of the twenty-eight units on the second and third floor. Um, again, keeping with the transparency that we proposed in incentive zone amendments, um, thirty percent for the ground floors on the apartments, and twenty-five percent minimum on the upper floors. Happy to take any questions that you guys might have.
No, it's very nice. In that side out there, fellas. So this would be in similar scale to, say, typical north. How many stories? Four?
I think it's four and five.
I think it's four and five.
Yeah.
We do have a couple of straight-on elevations that will water as well.
You go down to three over here, it looks like?
That that's where we now go for, um, you can go to the trade-on elevations. Um, we've tried to hide that four stories and used dormers on on that road A facing side.
The, was it the first one?
Yeah, first one.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, scroll down.
Scroll down. So those are the apartment buildings, those first two sheets. Um, west elevation faces fire hall, um, and the south elevation, one page down, would face road A. So those would be our two street-facing facades, no matter where we are on the development.
And then that mixed-use that you were asking about, Chris, I think is, uh, called more sheets.
Yeah.
Just a a general comment that I do appreciate, especially in the rendering, the first rendering that we had tonight, it's just the the varying facets of the faces to add some depth.
Yeah, and the form-based code really helps us get to that spot. So, Chris, that area you were talking about, if you go up one sheet, scroll up one machine, thank you, um, that north elevation, you can see where we're introducing dormers to keep the three-story feel while gaining that four-story.
So when we get to this site plan stage of it's a multifamily and commercial buildings, uh, are there any variances that you need from the form-based code to comply?
No, all the.
Transparency.
Transparency we've built with within the incentive zoning process, so reduce the values of transparency from the form-based code to get to where we are right now.
Yeah, to build two zones, all of that is consistent with everything that we established in the I S D. Okay, good.
I look forward to the planting of the five-story tree, so it'll be nice to see.
It'll take some time.
What's what's the height on this slope? Is it forty feet or a little bit more?
The top of bridge on the mixed-use is fifty-five feet, and the apartment building is about fifty.
Something. We we have the fire protection?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've gotten several comments that Mike's been coordinating with the fire marshal, so we're responding to those, but all of them have aerial apparatus access lanes, all of them have the required, uh, approaches and and proximities to the buildings, et cetera.
Did they review collapse zone and everything else?
I had a comment from my, um, he said that two sheets, we didn't see one or different, and that was in the previous, uh, presentation set. Just want to show.
I can speak to that a little bit more. Kim, if you can just scroll down a little bit to the colorized site plan. Keep going just a little bit more, sorry. So, Matt, that layout's significantly different from what was initially proposed from what we reviewed. Is that gonna be a new layout, or is that just a fault in the plan set?
No, that this plan was just shown for comparison purposes. This was a sketch plan that the planning board originally saw as part of the I Z application. So the plan set that was submitted to this board is the evolution of this taking into account fire code, road, road, um, configuration and changes. So it was just for comparison purposes.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, between now and I I guess starting the twenty-fifth, um, I'll be looking at the full-size sheets, getting into the detail, I assume the board members beginning into the detail with other plans in terms of, uh, you know, street layout and street widths and landscaping and streetscape and bleached streets and all the things that we're charged to look for, and, uh, those discussions will start the twenty-fifth and.
Right.
Some earnest, and that's part of the reason I pushed that one other application regarding the cell tower back to the following meeting, because I didn't want to handle both those issues at the same time. Um.
Yeah, and and if I could, we are eager to work through that with the board and anticipate, uh, several questions, um, on the twenty-fifth, but our goal really is to get through the preliminary overall approval set, final section one, which we've talked about from a phasing standpoint can appear before the board, uh, for your consideration and and really dive into those those details as well. Um, Marathon will be providing prior to the eighteenth, which is a week from some date, uh, a week from today. Yeah, um, which I think is is the cutoff as far as, you know, when things get uploaded, the last that it comes to you folks. We have some blow-up details being done by our landscape consultants, showing, uh, typical intersections with the crosswalk details, some benches, planting detail on those signage, uh, things that we know that the board, uh, from a complete street standpoint is very interested in taking a look at. Um, as well as our response to comments received to date in writing, so that the board understands, uh, what we've addressed and what we still have some back and forth to work through with with staff and and with M R B. So, uh, there will be quite a bit more additional information for for your consideration at that point.
Well, I guess on the eighteenth, the P R C will be talking about phase one, right? No? Oh, okay. You submitted it though, right?
We did.
Okay.
I believe.
I'll get, it came in.
No, it's just.
I would recommend to the board, if you have questions that could be considered by the applicant in advance, funnel them through Sarah, so she can give them to the applicant and they can be prepared or can you know, this is one, this is a bigger project, so you might have twenty questions. I'm sure you'd appreciate knowing what they are. They may be able to answer all of your questions with, you know, quickly. Um, so I think follow them through the staff and they'll distribute it.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great. We'd love to come with answers.
I'm sure you have in your package, Matt, a like a typical section of the different types of streets.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah.
I I I thought I recalled, I, that would be very helpful in terms of seeing what the streetscape will be for each particular area in terms of the spine road and then the, uh, the secondary.
Yeah, all of the secondary, all of these secondary roads are consistent. The only one that'll be different will be the spline road, which will show you both conditions as well as a typical intersection of of those as well.
Okay. So you have anything else to?
As long as the board has consensus, I'm looking back.
Any objections?
Steve didn't jeopardize it, I think.
Any objections to sending it to the town board? Hearing none.
Okay.
I'm sure Chuck will, uh, direct staff to refer it to the board.
Town board has our permission to come to bring back notes.
Must have been.
So.
Yes, Rob.
Okay, so it is the consensus of this board. And I assume, I think Bob was okay, uh, that the sketch plan is required under the F P C as submitted, uh, go back to the town board for its consideration. And good from there.
Wonderful. Okay, we'll see you back in a couple of weeks.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, there's some comments, there's some reviews by you, by the town planning, the town code enforcement. We can't see that review. Is that something that would be supposed to be able to see?
All right, meantime. Uh, trading. Couple of things certain that might just bubble up regarding, uh, Planning Federation has a learn-at-lunch, uh, the twenty-seventh of this month regarding wetlands. I see the Planning Federation just publicized a bee seminar. The well-being of bees.
I just missed it, sorry.
And I I didn't write the date down. And then, uh, excuse me?
That's March fifth.
Okay.
And then M R B and Hancock have posted their bootcamp, bootcamp training uh, for the year, so they have a session every month, so we're back in the training, folks.
Woo!
I'll be doing this one for.
Don't sound so excited.
Up town here for over a week and two months.
Oh.
And registered, I expect they call up. You're gonna need to show that offer.
Give your own third way for, uh, seven, six percent.
And then left.
Uh, I think that you're, anything else? So did you all refrain from clicking your bits?
I didn't even add a net, both. Don't blame me.
I told, I told Irene, it's me, I'm here. Testing. All right, if not, uh, the other seven.
Motion to adjourn it to eight oh seven.
Got a motion, got a second? Thank you. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
What happened to person that ever? I mean, I know we don't technically need it.